It is six o'clock and time for us to begin this city council meeting. Let me say that due to the increase of COVID cases and for citizen council and staff safety, no general seating in city council chambers will be offered during the 125-22 city council meeting. During the city council meeting, citizens will be queued to enter the city council chambers only if they have submitted a complete speaker's request form to speak on an item on the agenda or have an item on the agenda that is directly related to them. Otherwise, citizens will remain in the city hall lobby. Meetings can be viewed on the city website, city Facebook page, and Spectrum Channel Two. A Zoom component for citizens wishing to speak and participate during the meeting is also offered. Participation instructions are provided on the city council agenda. If at this time you would please rise for the invocation and for the pledge. Lord, thank you for the kindness of this community that has seen in so many individuals and groups that are reaching out to help others. Father, I thank you for our city staff. They work hard, they're competent, they're committed, and they take public safety serious. As always for the council, we pray for discernment because we are seeking to make the best decisions for all the citizens. In the last few days, we have lost some community leaders, and it is a reminder to us of what citizens who step out to make a difference in the community do to really make a difference. And Father, tonight, there are the beats of war and threat, and we pray for peace and we pray for the safety of those in uniform around the world who protect us. In Christ's name, amen.
Our pledge is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It has been a while since several of us on council were out at the Veterans Center and hosted by Allen Hill, who's just died, and it was a Daughters of the American Republic program, and they distributed to us the preamble to the Constitution of the United States of America. And I think it's good for us to be reminded, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." At this time, we have announcements of community interest.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to everyone. We've got a little smaller crowd tonight than we've had in the last few times, so but we welcome everybody and thank you for coming out tonight. I only have two announcements tonight, and the first one is we want to give a shout out to the city of Curville's Finance Department, which once again has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its annual comprehensive financial report. You see, that's a good group of people up there. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and this is the 37th consecutive year that the city has attained this, so quite an accomplishment for them. So Julie, Julie, I know she's here somewhere, is she not? She's outside? Okay. Julie Behrens and her staff, Trina, Kristen, Randy, Serena, Cody, and Jacob, we want to thank you all for a job well done again.
Good, good.
All right, and the city of Curville's Parks and Recreation Department Activity Guide for 2022 was posted on the city's website today and our Facebook page and will be mailed to more than 8,000 homes in the coming week. This activity guide outlines all the events planned this year by the Parks Department, from concerts to 5K races, sports leagues, parades, and a plethora, you like that word, Mike?
I like it.
All right, and a plethora of other activities. So I encourage everyone to check it out. It's a lot of fun just to thumb through it and see all the pictures.
Is that really how you say that?
Huh? He likes big words, so.
I'm just sitting here minding my own business.
All right, we have a word on community interest.
I had a couple. You wanted to also mention our finance team, and that's great, and congratulations to them. Another congratulations is to Julie Davis, our Convention and Visitors Bureau President and CEO, I'm not sure what all her titles are there, but this is her 20th anniversary with the CVB, and so I think that deserves congratulations. And then I just wanted to mention our wonderful HEB again. They were ranked the number-two grocer in the United States, and I just think that's, we have two of them right here, so that's super. And then, if you have not seen, the Senior Services Resource Guide, I think we mentioned this last time, this is super. They did a lot of work. Kim, thank you to you and that committee, and there's copies out there, and so pick one up and share it with your not-for-profit organizations. Get this out to people that need it.
All right. In regard to HEB, this is a national survey by a company that surveys grocery retailers, and the only one that beat out HEB was Amazon.
Wow.
Isn't that something? The world is changing. All right, if there are no other items of community interest, Chief, if you'll give us the COVID update.
Mayor, council brief update from our last meeting. As of the 24th, so as I mentioned before, we're not tracking the active cases anymore for Kirk County. The numbers don't always kind of match up with what we're seeing, so we really, what we've been watching is the hospitalization. That impacts our health care, that impacts our community directly. That number has been on the rise currently. They're at 36 hospitalized, seven of those are in the ICU as reported by the DSH, so the number of deaths were at 150. But I will note that KISD active cases, they posted up there on the 21st with 330, so active cases at KISD alone. 28% positivity rate per Peterson Health, and then I added some information regarding the vaccination by the population, so we're still, hasn't changed the fully vaccinated is sitting right about 49%, but the booster that we received, and that has gone up by about 500 since in the last two weeks, so that is 39% of the fully vaccinated have received the booster. As mentioned before, the Omicron variant is a little different from the Delta or the original, and that is highly transmissible. We've seen that directly in the city of Curville with our workforce, and we identified that in December and so the beginning of January. We did a few things to make sure that we continue to protect the organization, so each department reviewed procedures to maintain capacity and availability with a reduced workforce. So we did the plan, saying if you're 25% down or 50% down, what would that look like internally? We are offering testing for the city of Curville employees if they need to return to work or if they're symptomatic and unable to find a test because they've been so short lately. So we have provided that, and we revised our isolation and quarantine guidelines to be a little more consistent with the CDC, which helps our workforce get back a little earlier. We've seen good results with that change with the Omicron variant. And we've also provided the non-medical guidance and messaging to protect the workforce from potential pocket outbreaks, so they come up, we see those, myself and Kim work directly daily on this when they come through, answering questions and just try to identify, and you can see where it impacts the workforce. Fire department was hit early, so we had up to 12 people out with COVID, and that was sustained for about a week. So that was kind of the, I guess, the warning flag early, and so that's when we got together and really tried to identify that, and since then it's been shifting across the departments. The impact, so this is interesting, the impact for the organization City of Curville, since January 1st, we have had 66 positive cases and rolled up 31 closed contacts. Since March of 2020, there are 184 positive cases in the city. That is one-third in less than a month, so you can see the difference that we've seen with Omicron compared to the other two variants out there and the other two spikes that we've dealt with. So vaccine availability, still available locally, so the vaccine, the booster is one of the things that is very effective, more effective against it, and does reduce hospitalization and the symptoms. Still available at both HEBs, all the local pharmacies, including our local DSHS office is also offering the vaccine. Testing availability is still short, so the over-the-counter test, there's at-home tests, there's limited availability. We talked to a few of the pharmacies as they get them in, they kind of go out just as fast. Both HEBs and Walmarts do sell the at-home test for that. You can schedule with a pharmacy for testing at Walgreens, Peterson Urgent Care, and CVS, but Peterson, as mentioned, they saw the same spike that they identified early that that was coming, and so in the beginning of January, they changed over their Peterson Medical Associates at 1331 Banderas Highway, and it is a self-test only, but you have to schedule an appointment Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4 o'clock, so they have availability like every five minutes, and we can come through and be able to provide that test, take some of the pressure off the Peterson Urgent Care and some of the other, especially the ED. So, and that was all I had to provide tonight. Questions?
Curious, have we had any children hospitalized that we know of?
So region-wide, we do see the pediatrics in hospital patients. Locally, no, because we're not a pediatric care, so they typically go down to San Antonio at the Methodist Children's, the Santa Rosa University Hospital down there. So, but we're continuing to watch that regionally, the pediatrics, more the hospitalization, the ICU impact from a regional standpoint. So the San Antonio area, the RMOCK there, does a weekly call-in, and we get to hear the healthcare report out for that.
And Chief, what is the revised CDC protocol? Is it like five days out and then five days masked, or what is it?
Correct, so for non-healthcare providers, so I won't talk about the fire department there, so it is five full days from the start of symptoms. You can return to work, and then we encourage, encourage the mask for additional five days, social distancing, best practice for that, and just be respectful of your coworkers there. So that was one of the probably biggest changes. The other one also is the vaccine, so if you receive the vaccine or the booster within six months, or you've had COVID within the last 90 days, you can return to work, and then we do testing while they're back at work as a precaution, so we do that at fire administration. We've been providing that for the city.
Good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, Visitor Citizens Forum, do we have any persons lined up?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's move to the consent agenda. And let me say one thing on the 4, excuse me, 4B, just make a clarification. Down at the bottom of the page of that consent agenda, it goes from eight to eight certifications, and then it said 16 signatures, and there's a sentence under signatures. That should, the number should be nine and not 16, but that's the only, only change. Okay, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'm going to request to move item 4A.
4A, okay. All right, is there a motion on the rest of the consent agenda, 4B, 4C, 4D?
Can I pull, wait, wait, can I pull 4B just for some clarification?
Okay, all right. 4A and 4B, okay, so a motion on 4C and 4D?
I move that we accept 4C and 4D as presented.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so motion second, all in favor of 4C and 4D, if you raise a hand. Okay. Mr. Garcia on 4A?
Yes. Just a couple of questions. Hi. I was curious on, I was looking at the cover pages to this agenda, and on the second page, it says that this item was identified, budgeted, and approved in our FY '22 budget process. But whenever I was looking at the front page, where usually we get how much was budgeted and the amount that would be remaining after the expenditure, it didn't have any information. So I was just curious, how much was budgeted, how much we have left over, and where that fell into? And it's in the golf course fund, right?
Correct, that's correct, yes. So we received this quote originally a while back, so we budgeted the appropriate amount for the monthly fee. We actually budgeted a little bit over that just to cover in case it increased.
Okay.
So we do have sufficient funds budgeted and allocated for it.
Okay. Another thing, I have a couple more questions. After the agreement expires, will the city own the equipment?
Yes, it's a lease purchase.
Okay. And what's the benefit of doing a lease purchase agreement in this case?
Essentially, it comes down right now for us for funding, it's whether you pay the lump sum of the $52,000, which we do not currently have within the golf fund to be able to cover that.
Okay.
So the next best option for us is to finance it and lease it with a minimal interest fee at the end of the day, and then over five years, it'll be our equipment.
Okay.
So financially, it works out in our, in our favor.
Okay, and then adding on to that, the cost of it, I was looking at page one of two of what seems to be the proposal, and it, and one of the line items says that shipping is not included and it will be billed as an additional cost, so the city's going to be, you know, footing that. Do we know, have an estimate on what that's going to be yet, and how is, will that come back to council, or what's the process?
Yeah, so we noticed that as well, and we asked, and there will not be a separate fee, so it's going to be, it's going to be, it's all included.
Shipping's included and everything?
Shipping, yeah.
Awesome.
There's not going to be an additional fee.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Good. Do we have a motion on 4A?
Yes, I move to approve item 4A, the agreement.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor, raised hand, and it passes unanimously. All right, 4B.
Yes. If you look at line 5.4, it says that recipient shall pay HHSC $300 per pre-employment evaluation or other related service with the not-to-exceed number of 15 evaluations per state fiscal year. My question is, given the 28% rate of officers we don't have right now, could that number actually be more than that? Would we, would we need to modify that to say 20 evaluations per year?
Not right now, because we're selective. You don't get to this point in our process until we're fairly certain we're going to hire you.
Okay.
So it's not, every applicant doesn't make it to this stage of our application process.
Because I would just hate to see you not be able to hire somebody because you're over your limit on this.
Yeah, we don't foresee that happening right now. This, this is about the number. We have, currently we have eight positions open, so that would be how many we would need currently, and we're not, we're not seeing that number of people make it through our process to this point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
And we've got a really good relationship with State Hospital. I think if we were bumped over to 16, I think they'd probably accommodate.
Okay. Just checking.
Yeah, I think it was just a similar to try to give kind of order scale, you know, 15, 30, you know, would give us kind of roughly how many you think you're going to run through in a year.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute this inter-local agreement, or contract.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, motion is second, all in favor, raise hands, and it carries unanimously. All right, we come now to ordinances, second reading, and we've got a whole series that are second reading. Ms. McLeven, would you read that in?
Ordinance number 2022-02, second reading, an ordinance amending chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Curville, Texas. Such chapter more commonly known as the City Zoning Code. By amending said code to include adding new definitions, revising the requirement for variances, requiring signs for notification and other amendments as provided herein, providing a cumulative clause, providing for severability, providing an effective date or in publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have one citizen speaker signed up on Zoom.
All right. When we got here to council meeting today, we have four proposed amendments to this ordinance from Mr. Garcia.
Mayor, I'm going to move that we, that we don't act on this till next meeting. I'm not okay with getting this at my place right before the meeting, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to approve those, and that doesn't mean I don't agree with them.
Sure.
That just means I need more time to make sure.
Sure.
I would second that. I agree with that.
So technically, Mr. Hayes, are we, do we say we are tabling it and then just take it off-table at another meeting?
Back to you at the next meeting. I mean, it, you know, two reading requirements, so we know to bring it back.
Okay, all right, two, yeah, two required.
Do we ask the citizen speaker to speak now, or do?
Yeah.
I would go ahead and take that comment, sure.
Yeah, okay. We have a citizen speaker?
Ms. Tork?
Am I here? Yes. Okay, this is George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. The fact that you're tabling it probably doesn't change much of what I was saying because I'm not sure what was going to be amended, but anyways, to the points I had brought up before a little bit last meeting, the section five talking about zone bleed, it was stated last time that zoning code as written would prevent using property in a zone when that use is not already permitted. This, this holds true for primary land uses but not for secondary or auxiliary land uses such as parking, and an example might help show this. You've got two adjacent properties in different zones, such as a retail center adjacent to a residential zone. If you remove this code entirely, a house in the residential zone would not be prohibited from allowing the retail center to utilize its property as a parking lot or even an access driveway going through, which I don't believe is the intended result. And you could fix this by just simply saying, "Property in one zone cannot be used as accessory use to service another zone unless that primary use there was being permitted in that secondary zone." But anyways, section 10, talking about travel trailers, I'm assuming one of the amendments that you guys were presenting was the correction of this, but you might revisit the whole issue there because it looks like it conflicts with itself. If you look at the little C, talks about travel trailers may be parked within a residential district but only occupied by one or more people that don't claim the vehicle as its, as its home, and then the, the next little section says, "Travel trailer may be stored," which means parked and not in active use. It's confusing because you, you're conflicting what parked is. I think your goal could be solved by just simply saying, "RVs cannot be actively occupied for longer than 14 days other than in an RM or C3 zone," and it gets you where you're trying to go. You're just trying to prevent people from living in an RV. So anyways, relook at that, please. Section 11, talking about shipping containers, I'll just be as brief as I can be, which is, shipping container is not a land use. It's actually a building material for whatever it's being used as. A shipping container could be a storage shed, it could be a home if it's built to the codes, and according to the law that we talked about last time, you can't actually regulate building materials or aesthetic measures to be used on anything that is a building, and under the International Building Code, a shipping container actually falls under a building. So you probably need to revisit that. I don't think you can regulate shipping containers as a land use. And then, that's good enough. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Paxton, if, if you will, before we meet again, if you will hear again the comments of Mr. Burdi, see if we need to make changes, and we will, and then we will also consider these proposed amendments by Mr. Garcia.
Would it be possible to have just a separate response that isn't in the draft before that, just as a general response to that?
Yes.
So that, the intent of the language that Mr. Burdi brings up is either recognized and will show as an amendment going forward in second reading, or, you know, there's a reason that it is the way it is from staff's perspective. I just want to know, I want to know the response to that, I guess, is what I'm saying, and how that would affect the draft or not affect.
You need Mr. Burdi's in writing in order to be able to address it in any way you're okay?
Yeah.
All right, we've got a motion to consider this at the next meeting and go second. All in favor, if you know, I'm raising a hand.
Can I go ahead and just, while we're all here, explain a little bit of what I had there?
No, let's, let's hold it, and we'll consider it at the next meeting.
I think it'll be helpful that for you to consider now that we're here, so you know what my intent is between all of us, what I was looking at.
Yeah, and we will, we will get to that at the next meeting.
Okay.
All in favor of moving this to the next meeting, if you know, I'm raising a hand. Ordinance number 2022-03, Ms. McLeven?
Ordinance number 2022-03, second reading, an ordinance annexing two tracts of land plus an adjacent public right-of-way that exists as part of Coronado Drive into the corporate limbs of the city of Curville, Texas. Such property making up approximately 16.85 acres and generally located north and west of the 700 block of Coronado Drive. Each property more specifically described in the ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, adopting the service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property of a single-family residential zoning district R1, rezoning an adjacent tract of land currently located within the city by changing its zoning to an R1 zoning district and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have two citizen speakers signed up on Zoom.
All right. Yes, and we have two emails as well. Counsel, anything further on this matter?
I'll wait until the citizen speakers.
Okay. All right, if you, citizen speakers?
Philip Chopin?
Let me go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, hi. This is Philip Chopin, 1725 Mountain Laurel. I would like the city council to reconsider the three members that voted for the annexation, to reconsider that instead of putting everything at R1, the Coronado, there was a suggestion that the Coronado lots be R1, not an issue, but the lots that are in the new development are going to be piggybacking on, as was stated by the attorney, piggybacking on Village Glen, two accesses to that development through Village Glen. And there was a suggestion by the attorney that the lots that were backing on to the lots that are currently in the Village Glen would be one-third acre to match the lots. Now, we have an issue with the drainage, obviously, but I would like the council to reconsider that put the Coronado lots on R1 and put the lots on the 16.85 acres as RE, subject to a deeds and covenants similar to Village Glen. In other words, there's not going to be three-story houses built at the back, that they have similar deeds and covenants because they will be accessing the development through Village Glen. There are two accesses that they will be using, only one off of Coronado. So my suggestion would be, as somebody suggested in the last meeting, R1 for the Coronado lots, RE subject, RE initially, subject to a drainage plan and review of the size of the lots and the deeds and covenants of the new development matching those on houses and parking and everything else similar to Village Glen because they are piggybacking off of Village Glen. are piggybacking off of Village Glen. I know the annexation is, uh, an issue, the domino hole, I, I don't have an issue with that, but everybody has an issue with the drainage and also the access through Village Glen for the new development. So, my, my request is that it was, was not a unanimous vote the last time, but maybe reconsider RE to start, subject to a comprehensive drainage plan and, uh, similar deeds and covenants in the new development to match closely to those of Village Glen. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Burdi.
Thank you.
All right, we have another speaker?
George Burdi?
Uh, George Burdi, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. I'll just, I was just gonna call and reiterate what I said last time, which is, I, I think the land needs to be annexed, and I believe the zoning is, is actually correct, in my own personal belief, because there really isn't a, a link, uh, between the zoning and the drainage, which is what everybody's concerned about. But I understand people can disagree on the zoning. There are numerous concerns related to the subsequent development, however, and what I would urge council again to do is that the city staff do a more diligent review and accountability study of the development that does come in, whether it's RE, R one, whatever, most notably as it regards to drainage. The city has notoriously done a bad job of that. While it is not the developer's responsibility to fix the current drainage problems, it is absolutely the obligation of the developer to not, uh, worsen the drainage situation in the area to anybody. They don't have that, that's part of the requirements, but we need to be diligent in checking that through the development process. The proposal presented so far does state the, "The developer's intent is to divert some considerable amount of water towards detention ponds already at capacity." The developer stated that these detention ponds were already approved by the city years ago. Indeed, they were approved for the then-proposed Heights development, but did not take into account the new influx of diverted water. So, I'm not really sure how they're gonna pull this off. They haven't presented a way to do it, but whether it's R one or RE, I'm not particularly sure they can make any development there unless they modify the detention ponds that are in place. They can't just route water around places. That's gonna worsen it. So, I'm, I would urge council again to take a, a more directive interest in the planning process on this particular development, as it's raised issues for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Burdi. All right. Counsel, observations, questions? And I will, I will say, we do have, uh, an issue that I'd like for Mr. Richards or someone to address here in a minute, but I, I wanna go to Ms. Clarkson, but the issue is this. Two citizens, Nikki Caines and Michael Mozinko, both residents of Mountain Laurel Drive, have asked, have requested a written contract between the developer and the city of Curville affirming that the proposed development in city ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh three will not increase, increase the flood damage in our neighborhood and sign and distribute prior to breaking ground. As Cane says, uh, "Nowhere, nowhere have we seen a legal agreement with the owners, developers to repair or replace any damage that homeowners may incur due to flooding." Now, part of what Mr. Burdi addressed relates to that, but Ms. Clarkson?
Yeah, um, just some thoughts I didn't really speak after, after first reading. And I, and I really appreciate, and I really feel for the situation. Any situation that changes the land use is going to be uncomfortable, uh, for, for the people that, that are in the area most of the time. And just speaking to what I just heard, as far as, you know, suggestions for an agreement, we're, we're really not at liberty to do that. The nice thing about development agreements, when they exist, is that we do have the ability to do that. We've, you know, many of us have worked through development agreements where, you know, we have the ability to do that, but those come up when the developer wants something in return. As far as zoning, it's either we do it or we don't do it. And as far as land use, um, that, tho-, that, that's a yes or no. It's not, it's not a negotiation, and if we don't approve what is requested, then the developer can immediately pull their, their zoning, as I understand it. That it's, if, if, if they ask for R one, and we say, "No, but we'll do RE," or "We'll do part RE and part R one," then they're under no obligation at that point to enter into the city. Is that, am I correct?
That's right.
Okay.
State law has changed, and cities no longer have the ability to unilaterally annex property. And so, it's basically voluntary, uh, essentially voluntarily only.
And on the, on the drainage, on the drainage issue, um, I think, you know, it's, it's not uncommon for a lot of places in town, including my own home, to become, to become, um, subject to flooding conditions when we have flush, flush floods and high, and high rains. And we've gone through a, a drainage master plan, um, we've gone through that drainage master plan to identify those areas. And as we went through that plan, I learned that that was not ever part of the city's, um, first, as cities developed, that that's become something that has been added to. So, to put anyone's mind at ease, I will say that we have done a very, very diligent job on the code review committee to update our codes, to update our building standards, and to require, um, drainage studies prior to the development. And my question then would be, what is the outcome if that study doesn't bear out the results? So, what hap-, what, what is the recourse? Let's say engineering looks at it, they show us studies, they tell us that this is going to fix, or it, it will not worsen the problem as it exists today, and that in ca- that in fact doesn't become the case in reality. What happens then?
So, Drew, if you could talk a little bit more about what the process is going forward, particularly with the plating process, this is not applied proper yet, and so, uh, through that plating process, there are construction documents, there are engineering elements that go into play that do go under review. You know, and I will retort, the, the, the drainage standards have changed. They've gotten more stringent. Not only have they gotten more stringent over time, uh, uh, different than neighborhoods adjacent to this that, that had less stringent standards, uh, but the reality is that we now also, in addition, have extra sets of eyes that are looking at this. So, it's not just our staff that is reviewing engineering plans. We actually, um, have a third-party independent, uh, engineering firm review, uh, those engineering documents to make sure, uh, just, just as a double check.
And then, just to tag on to that, my last question that kind of follows that is on to Mr. Burdi's question. What if those detention ponds aren't sufficient? So, they, they, they redirect the flow, but then the, the overflow in the detention ponds aren't sufficient to contain that drainage? How far does it go? And where, where's their responsibility? And how far does, I mean, what happens then?
If they are utilizing those existing drainage retention ponds, they'll be required to include those in their drainage analysis.
Okay.
Uh, the initial design for those retention ponds did include this area, uh, a very similar design as this was originally part of the Heights. It was just never constructed. Uh, but that will be part of their review, that they're showing that they, those existing ponds do have capacity based on those standards.
Understanding that, um, it doesn't, that the standards have to be met before it happens.
Right.
So, we're promising in advance this is gonna happen. So, it, so, so life happens and it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't bear out. Then what?
And they have to redesign their project, or if they're not able to accommodate it, then the project doesn't move forward. But ultimately, you, you, per state law, you cannot have drainage come off of your property at a different rate and location than, than pre-development. And so, they have to engineer to that standard.
So, what do we say to the neighbors if they, if they feel that their drainage is worse? How do they, how do, what, if, if, if this is gonna, if this is gonna change and the land use is gonna change, if council decides to approve that, um, what reassurances do they have as far as, you know, I understand the upfront reassurances, which are, we do our due diligence, we get engineering, we get planning, we get design, but what if it, what, what if they feel that it is not, that it's adding to their problem? What, what happens?
Yeah, ultimately, you know, drainage is a civil issue between two neighbors, uh, and, you know, if they're able to prove in a court of law, uh, that there have been damages caused, uh, by, uh, you know, an, an errant, uh, property development, for whatever reason that occurs, um, you know, you can have a private homeowner, no, no fault of the developer that changes something to their property or their backyard, perhaps putting in a pool, any number of things, uh, that then causes a drainage issue. Anytime you have a drainage issue between two property owners, it causes a civil damage issue, it's a civil court matter.
What happens if the, the, the street underneath takes care of the drainage as it comes off the hill? The people on Mountain Laurel are much better off, but it's further down that we've, we've got, you know, we have three days, it never stops raining, and so, the present drainage ditches that are there don't seem to accommodate it. I mean, where, where does the line start and stop? Three days of rain or one day of rain? And then who's, is there some responsibility on the city to go in and redo those drainage ditches?
Yeah, so, it hearkens back to that master drainage plan that Councilmember Clarkson referenced earlier. Um, you know, we do know, it is, we, we have a, uh, uh, reference element, uh, within that downstream, uh, drainage path, as it's making its way down to the Guadalupe. As referenced before, this is a community that, you know, for decades and decades of development, really did not, um, look at drainage in a very holistic way. Uh, and so, absolutely, there's, there's catching up to do in regards to those pieces. Again, remember that, uh, many of those drainage projects were prioritized based off of, uh, potential for loss of life and then potential for loss of property, right? And so, that's really how those pieces matriculated to the top on the ones that you all were looking to achieve in, in the most near term, uh, which, you know, we are actively have a construction project for, uh, uh, Lower Street and that downstream, uh, portion that crosses thereby the Take It Easy, uh, Park. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does, it does.
Before we get to, uh, Mr. Richards, um, I've thought about this a lot, and I've thought about the, the video of seeing the floodwaters in coming into the residences there below and the property there below, or, or on Mountain Laurel, and that, that is disturbing. What my understanding is that the city staff and the developer have taken that seriously and have designed something that can reduce that kind of out-of-control drainage. I hear both Ms. Eichner and Ms. Clarkson saying, "We, we really don't want to make more of a problem for the folks on Mountain Laurel than they already have." And I understand when you own, you own a house and you've got open land behind you, it's generally not exciting to think you're gonna have all the series of homes in, in there behind you, but, um, you know, that, that happens all over the town when there's somebody's come in, said, "Okay, here's the zoning, and here's what we're gonna do." Mr. Richards, you wanna clarify and then we'll move on?
Yeah, so I'll clarify a couple of things that, that have been mentioned. First, I think it's important to recognize that, um, this process is multifaceted.
I'm, I'm sorry. Give us your name and your address.
Greg Richards, two eighty Thompson Drive, Curville. So, the process has a couple of, uh, couple of steps to it. So, the first is, there's a request for voluntary annexation and zoning for R one. And in my mind, the, really, the only, uh, analysis at that point is, do we want this in the city? Do we wanna provide services? Do we wanna be required to? And then, second, what's compatible with the immediately adjacent area? So, if this was a, an issue where, uh, the property owner wanted to zone this as C two and put in a commercial structure, that really wouldn't fit with the adjacent uses. The drainage, which I fully acknowledge is a significant and meaningful issue that needs to be addressed, um, it's really kind of, s-, at this stage of the game, it's kind of become the tail that's wagging the dog. Drainage has to be addressed, uh, but at this stage, to me, the issue is, do we want this in the city? And what is the correct zoning considering, uh, the, the uses in the immediate area? Step two, before a shovel full of dirt can be turned over, there's gonna have to be a significant drainage analysis and a subdivision plat prepared, and all that will be subject to the rigor of both, uh, the owners, engineer, uh, as well as the city's engineering staff, uh, and any, uh, third-party engineers that are gonna review it. EA is absolutely correct. State law, I think it's chapter eleven of the Water Code, says that you cannot redirect a drop of water onto a neighbor's property, nor increase the rate of flow onto a neighbor's property without incurring civil liability. And I think that this developer has gone to significant lengths to say, "Hey, not only a, are we not going to add a drop of water, but we're going to significantly reduce the stormwater flow over the, the neighborhood that's affected." So, those lots where you saw the, the water flowing over the retaining wall, uh, those lots have been subjected to an analysis by the developer's engineer to say, "We think we can reduce stormwater flow by fifty to seventy-five percent." So, the, the rigor of study of the stormwater, stormwater analysis is gonna come at the next step. And, and this developer's not looking to skip that step, but rather to say, "Hey, let's approach step one first, and then let's move to step two." And I think I've covered everything with that, unless y'all have any questions.
All right, okay. Any questions of Mr. Richards?
Has the developer been able to meet with these people and have a discussion with them, uh, to reassure them of what he plans to do with the drainage?
I believe Mr. Welborn has, has met with them on, on the occasions. Mike Welborn, six thirty-one Water Street. We did have a meeting in our office, and, uh, Ms. Peterson and several others came to that meeting, and we discussed and showed them the drainage, um, how we would address it. They had questions, we answered those questions, and then it kind of moved from drainage into really not wanting any kind of development at all behind the property.
Counsel?
I was in that meeting with Mr. Welborn, and I think that was a gross miscaut-, mischaracterization of the meeting.
Wait, 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 wait. Did you come to the microphone?
Yes, if you'll.
Did you come to the microphone?
If you'll approach, please.
Thank you.
Give us name and address, and are you, are you signed up with the city secretary?
No, sir, he's not. He, he did not sign up before the meeting was read into record.
Make an exception, I would appreciate it.
I'll make an exception briefly.
Thank you very much. Much of the issues that are being presented today were presented before planning and zoning. I think it was a fair hearing, it was, more data was presented, and that you got a good judgment, reflecting the values, citizen to citizen. We asked to meet with the developer, we asked that, uh, Mr. Welborn relay that, uh, request, and, uh, nothing transpired. We would still like to meet with the developer and discuss issues. The question was, were we given an opportunity? And it was not. I think the bottom line is, we did a rough calculation about everything that could go wrong in this process, and if you would just adhere to a one-acre zoning, which is residential estate, it just takes care of itself. You can mitigate the, uh, the impact on all of us through that zoning. But I want to say that we looked at, uh, challenged the, uh, the calculations that we thought were implicit in the original design plan of forty-five lots. There was no design calculation. Mr. Welborn said that he was gonna go back to developer, there was a hundred thousand dollars in fees that would be paid to him to have that forthcoming, and apparently, that got dropped. So, when he says that there are design calculations, there aren't any. Just want you to know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have any response? All right. Counsel, are you ready to move on this?
Well, I'll just say, speaking of adjacent uses, looking at, I don't know if everybody still has the image that was given to them, um, but you look at the north side of the property, the subject property, and that's zone residential estates. You look on the south side, and that zoned R one. So, when we talk about what best fits with the adjacent uses, really, we can go either way. We're not throwing in a random zoning here. We're throwing in one that actually is compatible with an adjacent use. We're throwing in one that actually is compatible with an adjacent use. So that was just one. And secondly, because we already have a significant issue with stormwater drainage, I think that's why it's so crucial to see all that information before we move forward in this. And I'll stick with my comments at the last meeting and why I'm going to be voting the way I am, but I think having more of that information that would be presented in an analysis would help all of council and the citizens truly understand what's going to happen, because after this vote happens, it's out of our hands from here on out. I do think it needs to be annexed, like I said before, but I would like to get more information before we let it go out of council and put the existing residents who are representing in that instance in that trouble. That's all I have to say on that.
Well, you know, and I rely on the advice or the recommendation from planning and zoning, and there's obviously some division going on. And as long as there's conflict there, I don't feel comfortable overriding that and not taking their- not taking-
Wait, wait, wait.
This usual finish.
Okay, yeah, and not taking their recommendation. You know, it's just like the neighbor opposition. That's a biggie for me. And there's so many people opposed to this. The drainage concerns, yes, it does line up with the 2050 comprehensive plan, but these other things are a real issue for me, primarily the planning and zoning that is divided right now. Go ahead.
But planning and zoning approved this December 2nd?
With a zoning of RE.
Yes, they didn't approve it with a, they recommended an RE.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they had two meetings on this because they weren't satisfied about all the information presented from both sides, the neighbors and the developers. So they requested a second meeting and for the two parties to meet, and afterwards they still decided with RE.
Let me hear this, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Clarkson.
Yeah, I was just going to ask what the vote was. That's all I was going to ask. I didn't need to interrupt you, I apologize for that. I was just going to ask you, because I understood it was a split vote, and I was just trying to get clarification, I wasn't trying to interrupt.
Oh, yeah, no.
It was, do you know what it was?
It was a unanimous vote for RE, wasn't it?
It was unanimous.
It was split also.
It was 4-3, is what I understand.
There was at least one opposition, and there may have been two. I thought it was 4 to 3.
I do not have that immediately in front of me. Give me just a minute, let me sit back and find that.
I'm sorry, wait.
Give me just a minute, let me find that.
Okay. Mr. Hoppe, this issue of, okay, of what planning and zoning approved, and we've got a clarification on that, and then the question of more information before this decision is made, how do we proceed on that?
Yeah, well, again, you know, it's a procedural element, right? So as was alluded to earlier, you know, this is really about usage and land usage. It's, you know, regardless of whether it's an RE zoning, whether it's an agricultural zoning, whether it's an R1 zoning or any type of zoning use, there's a whole other host of elements as it goes through that plating stage. Or if it's already platted, you know, not necessarily pertinent to this lot, but another lot, like a commercial lot that wouldn't necessarily need additional plating procedures, goes through a building permit process. And then that building permit is reviewed, and there's a whole number of engineering, both on public infrastructure as well as private infrastructure and private development that occurs on there, that happens either in the purview of the P&amp;Z or is administrative purview, given, you know, the review of those professional engineering documents. So it usually does not play into a zoning element, which is purely, you know, really based off of land use.
Okay.
And those drainage standards are not any less stringent for an R1 zoning versus an RE zoning. The drainage standards are what the drainage standards are.
All right, Mr. Paxton?
It was a 5-2 vote from planning and zoning.
Was that 5-2 vote approving only RE?
Recommending annexation and recommending RE.
Recommending REs for all the homes there?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I have felt that the water issue, and I know it exists, I don't discount that in any way, shape or form. One of the questions that I do have is, over the years, why that drainage issue has not been brought before council or brought before the county or brought before the developer? It suddenly has become paramount, but yet all these years, people have been living with it, and that's been a question in my mind, that if it is such a huge issue, why have people put up with it? I have felt that going with R1 meets the 2050 plan, it's like for like. The annexation absolutely needs to take place. If that doesn't happen and it remains county property, they could have most anything in there. They're just, anything could go in there. And I think that with the R1, it just, it addresses that big drainage problem that is there, that it will, it will take care of it, and the neighborhood will, basically, it'll remain the same as far as type of houses, lot size, all of those things. So for me, it just seems like it's a win-win, and-
All right. Any other comments from council? Let me say that in my almost four years on council, there are zoning issues that are some of the hardest decisions to make. And I think of two previous ones, one that's really kind of current and one that from several years ago, of opposition by existing residents. And I understand that because you want to protect your property values and you don't, in a lot of ways, don't want your neighborhood to change or whatever. But we have to come back to, you know, what is the best decision? And here's where it gets difficult, and I realize we don't have a contract per se of what the developer is going to do, but, I mean, we know, but anyway, we've got to trust the process. And I would be the first, if this goes in and it doesn't address the drainage issue and help the existing neighbors, I'd be very upset. But I think we need to proceed. Do we have a motion on this issue?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-03 and establish the zoning for the annexed property as a residential estates district RE.
All right, so, yeah, R1, so it's all R1?
RE.
RE. Yeah, right, all RE, okay. Then that's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor, if you'd like it be known by the raised hand? And there are two all opposed by the same sign? All right. Then what is the motion on ordinance number 2022-03?
I will move that we approve ordinance number 2022-03 on second reading as for zoning and for zoning as R1.
Wait, what's your, yeah?
I'm saying that it will be zoned as R1 and annexed and zoned as R1, excuse me.
So it need to be clarified?
No, I think, no. That's what the ordinance is presented before you.
Okay, all in-
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? And it's three to two, all opposed by a lack sign? All right. Ordinance number 2022-04.
All right. Ordinance number 2022-04, second reading. An ordinance annexing a tract of land into the corporate limits of the city of Kirbel, Texas, such property making up approximately six acres and generally located southeast of and adjacent to Holdsworth Drive and a portion of which connects to Pasco Avenue North, more commonly known as 253 Holdsworth Drive. Such property more specifically describing the ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limits. Adopting a service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property as a multifamily residential R3 zoning district and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Your note? Okay, all right. Second reading, do you have a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-04 on second reading.
All right.
I'll second that.
Got a motion second, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it carries unanimously. 5D, Ms. McInnes?
Ordinance number 2022-05, second reading. An ordinance annexing two tracts of land plus an adjacent public right of way that exists as part of Lehman Drive into the corporate limits of the city of Kirbel, Texas, such property making up approximately 168.84 acres and generally located along the west and southwest borders of Peterson Regional Medical Center. Such property more specifically describing this ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city and adjacent to the city limits. Adopting a service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property as agriculture AG and public and institutional PI zoning districts and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, this is second reading. Any discussion? I hear a motion.
I will move that we adopt ordinance or approve ordinance number 2022-05 on the second reading.
Got a second? All in favor, raised hand, and it carries unanimously. Okay, 5E, Ms. McInnes?
Ordinance number 2022-06, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kirbel, Texas, such chapter more commonly known as the City Zoning Code, by changing the zoning to multiple lots along Washington Street and between Barnett Street and North Street, said lots more commonly known as 500, 504, 508, 512, 602, 604, 608, 616, 624, and 625 Washington Street and 817 Barnett Street within the city of Kirbel, Kirk County, Texas, from a residential transition zoning district RT to a public and institutional zoning district PI and providing other matters relating to the subject. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, counsel, discussion on this. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-06.
I'll second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? And it passes unanimously. And now we come, Ms. Behrens, to our financial report for the month ending December 31.
Good evening, everyone. So last time we talked, that because we only had one meeting in December, I was only able to bring you information through the end of October, so this report will be more current, so it will be through the end of December on all these reports. Start with the general fund here, so talk about property tax first. Budget of 10.7 million, current collections of 5.6. 94,000 of that is from prior year taxes, penalties and interest compared to 44,000 in those same groups last year. It varies a lot year to year, that's really hard to predict, but that is a pretty high number, so it could be related to some late payments from COVID, not really sure why that's up as high as it is. As of December 31st, property tax collections were 2.2 million higher than the same period to date. And we'll talk about that a little bit more as we go through, but simply it's timing. So different people pay their taxes at different times. So typically, January is your highest property tax payment month. You know, for whatever reason, this year, we had a lot of property tax payments in December. So we do expect that to flatten out because property tax collections are by the certified rule. Moving on to sales tax, and we've talked about this a lot. Budget of 8.6, I'm sorry, 8.6 million, current collections, close to 2.3. So with an average increase over 15% over the first quarter, we're just continuing to monitor that as we go along. That trend seems to be pretty strong, primarily still coming from retail, food service, manufacturing, and construction is hopping up there. We do have January's numbers, it's not included in this report. We talked about this in EIC yesterday, so for January, we were actually up 26%, keeping in mind that 57,000 of that was for future payments, so even backing that out, we're still sitting at a 20% increase for January. I'll put this chart in here just to kind of support what we were saying about property tax. You can see the last three years' collections there in December spiking up there in '22, so you'll see that level out in January and then kind of trickle out throughout the rest of the year. Okay, looking at revenues for the general fund. Again, the year-to-date fiscal year '22 budget estimate is based on three-year history of where we are percentage to date for each category. So we did a calculation, obviously, over the last three years by category, just saying, so for example, property tax would be at 45% of our budget for the year-end of December 31st. And then those are calculated out based on individual categories, just to get us as close as we can to what we think we ought to be seeing at this point in the year. Just a few notables. On the service revenue there, the increase over last year is primarily coming from EMS, which is better than budget and better than last year. And then recreation does show a little bit of a shortfall compared to last year, but is doing better than budget, so we'll continue to watch that as we go into the spring. And then on the transfers in, you'll see worse than budget there. What that is relating to is in fiscal year '21, you'll remember, we had some CARES Act funding that we transferred out of the grant fund into the general fund, and we don't have that this year, so that's the difference there. Okay, this is just showing you by category, again, like we looked at last month in relationship to where revenues are coming from. So we're a little higher than budget on property tax than we, that we expected, of course, because of collection. But again, property and sales tax are the highest revenue categories there. Here's some sales tax information, just looking at the last three years of trends, and you can tell that it really follows a pattern. So we're seeing the same exact pattern as we've seen over the past few years as far as when we're receiving revenue, it's just that it's trending up. So it's pretty constant. And again, you know, through the first quarter, that's looking good. We can actually say through January, but I think after we get through the second quarter, we'll have really a better idea of where we think we're going to be in the year. But very similar pattern, so I thought this was pretty interesting. Okay, looking at expenses on the general fund, personnel, 3% over fiscal year 2021. The maintenance item there being less than 2021 is going to be related to paving, so those are pretty big expenses, and it just depends on when they hit as far as when that actually levels out compared to last year. The difference in the transfers out is going to be that $440,000 that was budgeted for asset replacement, so we've already moved that over, so that's why there's such an increase there on asset replacement. Okay, same kind of view here on expenses. One thing that we discussed earlier before council meeting is, just for clarification, the capital outlay here is not related to CIP. So capital projects are in a separate fund. This is specifically related to purchases that, from a financial reporting standpoint, we capitalize. So anything that we would purchase out of the general fund that would be capitalized and depreciated over time fits into this category, so if IT bought a new server within their operating budget, that would be capitalized. Some of our street improvements are capitalized depending on the nature of the improvement, so that's the kind of things that is. But the CIP budget is completely separate, so I didn't want that zero there to say we're not making any progress in our capital projects. We just haven't spent any money in capital outlay yet to date. As expected, personnel trending right on budget, 69%. We had 70% budgeted. Supplies, we had 4.8% budgeted, we're landing right about 4. So this really gives us a good look at how we're comparing to what we budgeted by percent, and we can use that for monitoring this year's budget, but then also for future forecasting, whether do we have really the slice of the pie sectioned out the way we need to. Okay, moving on to water fund, so budget of water sales of about 6.7 million. Water sales are running behind estimate and behind last year. So we continue to have this conversation, um, very wet summer. Uh, right when we were in the peak of irrigation season, people weren't watering. And so we started the year off behind. We're kind of hoping that we'll see that level out, and we've already seen January billing come in. It is slightly ahead of last year. So we'll kind of see if we play catch-up here in the early part of the spring, so we'll continue to monitor that. Um, we are seeing uh twelve percent uh less consumption in the residential area. Keep in mind that there are a lot of people who irrigate with their residential meter that don't have a separate irrigation meter, and they're lumped into that residential number. Uh, but I think the big indicator here is irrigation at twenty-six percent less consumption than last year. Um, because commercial is flat. So that's a pretty good indicator of where the the driver is. Sewer cells are ahead of budget and ahead of last year. Again, they're much more stable because they're the same throughout the year once we conduct sewer averaging. Um, this is a continued trend from twenty twenty-one. And we do conduct sewer averaging for residential customers uh during the months of December, January, and February. So that's January, February, and March bills. Then once that's over, we re-average, and you'll see that reflected on April bills. Okay, on the, this is just the same overview uh as we did on the general fund. Um, same concept here. Uh, the budget estimate is based on uh average of three years. Um, total fund is running a little bit behind estimated budget and behind last year. A couple of things here that we noticed. Um, our shortfall in the other categories is related to water tap fees. So in twenty twenty-one, we had a large amount of water taps related to new development. And the new development that we're seeing happening right now, a lot of those areas already have water taps, so they're not having to install water taps to create development. So that's what we really kind of found was driving that. So again, we'll watch that as we move forward, um, with some stuff we're seeing in development services. We would certainly expect to see that pick up um with some projects that Guillermo has told us are about to be kicking off. So last year, you'll remember, we talked a lot about waste disposal, and they were really um having revenue trending upward over there. And this year, we've noticed for the first quarter, it's trending down. So I just reached out to them and asked them, you know, for their opinion, and they were quickly able to give me this. And I just thought it was interesting to to note what departments are doing out there, monitoring their metrics, you know, really watching their business and and paying attention to daily operations. Um, but it just gives us a good look at what's happening and and why the revenue trends, you know, directly correlate with the volume that they're actually in um intaking over there. So um, last year, we did raise some rates over at the wastewater treatment plant directly related to chemical toilets and those kind of things because of the cost of treating that, and so this may be a reflection of that. Or um Donovan says in wetter times, people pump their septic more. So now that we're in a drier time, maybe that's a driver. But anyway, I just thought it was interesting to say, you know, what these guys are doing out there to monitor their business and and really pay attention to what's happening within their department. Same overview of revenues here as we did on the general fund. Um, trending right, really, along with what we budgeted as far as percentage and um so nothing, nothing real significant here, other than just, you know, a good, good way for us to monitor and forecast. On the expense side of the water fund, um, the big one here, of course, is gonna be transfers out. Again, some of this is due to timing. Um, some of them are monthly transfers, some of them are lump sum transfers, depending on how it's budgeted. Our street use fee did go up because our total water fund revenues went up, so that's a little bit of the increase. And then we did have that three hundred and thirty thousand dollar transfer out to the water fund asset replacement. Again, graphical view of expenses. Um, the capital outlay here, an example of that, just kind of for your information, same concept with the general fund. So any new meters we put in the ground, any new water lines we put in the ground, um, anything relating to the water system is capitalized, so that falls under that capital outlay. And you will see that grow as time goes on, and we continue to add more new things to the ground. Okay, golf fund, um, always like to bring you good news about that. Um, continuing to show growth, eight percent ahead of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, you heard about the new irrigation controller that we're gonna be installing over there soon. Um, as soon as that contract can get finalized and approved. Uh, spring tournaments will be kicking off pretty soon. And then just continue to see uh good things as the spring comes, and excited for for what's gonna come this year with some things they've really done over the past year to make that course better. Development Service Fund, so revenues from permits and fees are thirty thousand ahead of last year and better than estimated budget. So seeing a little bit of a turnaround there compared to fiscal year uh in twenty-one, which is kind of what we expected to see. Um, expenses are higher than revenue right now, which is kind of normal because our expenses over there are somewhat fixed, specifically with salaries and those kind of things. Um, we did lower the transfer in budget from uh in this budget year compared to last budget year just based on about, you know, budget balancing exercises that we go through as the budget uh given estimated revenues and those kind of things as far as what their need was. Um, remember that the Development Services Fund falls under the general fund for financial reporting. So it's separated out here just for transparency reasons, but when you see our overall city finances, Development Service Fund is grouped in with the general fund. Okay, hotel occupancy tax, eleven point four percent of rev- ahead of revenues um compared to fiscal year twenty-one. Um, we have done some increased advertising to promote Kerrville, so uh some billboards across the state that have gone up uh that Ashley and her team have been coordinating, uh, some magazine uh things specifically related to CVB, but then also directly through the Parks Department. And of course, the social media uh advertising has picked up a lot. So we're hoping to have an increased number of events if if COVID will allow us, and so that should continue to drive this this area up. So again, just to give you an update on what's coming up, um, we have completed our audit. Um, a little uh finalizing financial statements now. Uh, we'll go through a review process uh with that, getting back with our auditor. Um, just to make sure we work out our financial report for you guys on the twenty-second. Um, which is coming, the budget amendment, which we discussed earlier, will be the first reading on February eighth, and the second reading will be on the twenty-second, which is also the day that BKD will present the annual financial uh financial reports. And then we'll be starting the budget process here really soon. Any questions?
Didn't we just finish the budget process?
Pretty much non-stop.
It's a big circle.
I was counting on that, okay, February twenty twenty-two, you start the budget process, which is then adopted in September.
That's right.
A long process.
It's long, but the budget's fun. That's the fun stuff.
Yeah, okay, now, the award, uh, the finance department just got for the thirty-seventh year.
Right.
Would you explain what that is, who 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 has made that award?
Sure, so the Government Finance Associate Association, um, it's a national organization. And basically, you apply for the award utilizing your, your in financial reports that that will be what you will be seeing um February twenty-second. And it has to go through a certain checklist and a certain process of what has to be contained in there, what's required, how transparent is it, uh, does it meet all the guidelines? And they have outside reviewers that are also other government officers throughout the nation. So you're not just compared with Texas, but you're compared nationally. And so when you submit those awards, same with our budget book, it's just a budget award instead of the financial award, so.
One thing I want to say that I appreciate so much is the transparency. Uh, folks can see the budget, go through the budget, understand, you know, where the money is spent, and and uh I think you do a great job at that. Hey, one other comment that I'm that I'm gonna open up to the rest of council for comments and questions. I know we can't count on this, and I mentioned this at the five o'clock workshop. But if we continue like we have so far in this fiscal year, we could end up with three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars above what's budgeted.
I think that's a fair, I don't know what if the number is exact, but
I'm not gonna pin you down.
The trend is there. I mean, sales tax is strong. Um, I think that, you know, Mr. Hoppy spoke earlier about those reasons and, you know, our regional retail market, you know, that's that's just strong, and it's continued strong, you know, much to our surprise really through COVID. And so I think that that says a lot about Kerrville, about our industry, and and about what we're doing for for growth and development. So my estimation right now is, yes, we are gonna be better than budget. I feel like after the second quarter finishes, I'll be a lot more comfortable at saying this is where I feel like we will be. Um, first quarter ends a little too soon, I think, for me to be speaking to what I think that number is gonna be. But certainly, we're doing much better than we expected to do budget-wise.
All right, okay, council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, agenda items for future, future agenda items. Hey, buddy. All right, if not, we adjourned seven twenty, and that's better than last time.